Hello and welcome to the Project Elective podcast. Project Elect is a nonpartisan nonprofit whose goal is pretty simple. We want to get more Latter Day Saint women involved in public service. On this podcast, we interview amazing Latter Day Saint women who were involved in public service. Hi, my name is Audrey Perry Martin. I'm the founder of Project Elect and the host of this podcast. Today, we have an exciting guest. Her name is Alisa Allred Mercer. She has a wealth of experience. Right now, she's running for school board in Davis County, and she has a background in politics, nonprofits. And I'm really excited to talk to her because we haven't talked a lot about nonprofit public service, and I think we're going to have a great conversation. Alisa, thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you for having me.
So, Alisa, I really want to hear about your background. I want to hear your story. Like, you did nonprofits for a long time. You've done some political stuff. Now you're running for office. How did that get started?
So, it's interesting, kind of thinking about running for a school board now and looking back at all the things that I've done and to see how they relate to that. I went to BYU and I studied sociology. And I went on an LDS mission to the Dominican Republic. And when I was going on my mission, the area authorities over our area requested that the sister missionaries receive training in the church welfare program. And so, as part of that, we got pulled out of our districts in the MTC and went to the specialized training. And when I got down to my mission in the Dominican Republic, I was super excited about the idea of welfare and self-reliance and just helping people face some of the realities of their lives in the Dominican Republic. And my mission president initially said, "We don't really have time for that here in our mission," even though the area authorities had requested that we get the training. And I was a little crestfallen when that happened. And so, every week, I would teach my 25 discussions. That was the goal for the mission with my companion. And then, my companion and I would find some way to enact the church welfare program, which at that point was teaching leadership, how to do training models. It also involved a literacy program that was running in the Dominican Republic. And then, I would include a quote in my letter to my mission president about the importance of the church welfare program. And near the end of my mission, for the last quarter of my mission, I think my mission president got the idea that it really was important to me. And we had some switch-ups in leadership and the senior couples in my mission. And we had several senior couples that had to go home unexpectedly. And so, my companion and I became full-time the literacy missionaries for all of the Dominican Republic, which was pretty cool. And it was amazing learning more about the literacy program and teaching it to Relief Society presidents and bishops and stake presidents all throughout the island. And then, when I came home for my mission, I taught at the MTC and the welfare program, and so, trained other missionaries on the principles of self-reliance. But literacy in general became something that was really important to me. You can imagine, you can't teach a primary lesson if you can't lead. It's almost nearly impossible to be a leader in the church without being able to read. And we had this miraculous experience with one man on my mission when he talked about how he was called as a bishop and his literacy skills were pretty limited. And he was working with literacy missionaries and working really hard and trying to read. And he said, "He got a letter in the mail from the church and couldn't read it. And there was no one there to help him read it." And he knelt down and he said, "It felt like this combination of the hard work that he had been doing and the faith that he had." And he said, "And I was able to read it and I understood the information." And I saw lots of amazing miracles in terms of literacy on my mission. And when I got back, I continued studying at BYU in sociology. And I kind of always thought that one day I would take my family and we would live overseas and we would work for an NGO or do something. And I later realized that other people in my family also have opinions and get to have votes on what we do with our lives. But you don't need to go overseas. You don't need to be in another country to be able to serve and find ways to serve. So, after BYU, I actually unexpectedly fell into a job at Horizonte Instruction and Training Center, which is the adult high school completion center for Salt Lake District. And it also has youth there that kind of have had difficulties in school or the Young Parent Program. And I was an instructor there at Horizonte for several years. And then, also, I worked off and on for a couple of years with the National Literacy Organization in Guatemala, training teachers on literacy methodologies. And my kind of interest was more non-formal adult education. So, literacy when it's a practical life skill. And I just think there are so many ways that reading is part of our everyday life. I don't think we could even count the number of ways that we are involved with reading everywhere around our lives. So, yeah, that's the early background. And then, I got married, had three kids quickly in succession. Two came at the same time because they're twins, and then another one. And we lived, so we lived in Texas and New Zealand for a few years. And in Texas, I did work with an after-school program mentoring children, giving them examples of job options that they could have. So, bringing in mentors to have them do enough after-school programs in an inner-city Houston project. And then, we moved to New Zealand for a few years, where I focused on my own kids' education and was part of a co-op preschool program, which was amazing because it was New Zealand. So, it was like held on a volcano overlooking the harbor, this like just beautiful picturesque location. But I think New Zealand does early childhood education really well. A lot of child-led learning. Kids could do all sorts of things and even hammer and nails and whatnot when they're in preschool. And it was just really fun. And when we moved back to Utah about 10 years ago, I worked part-time developing curriculum for English as a Second Language learners. And again, I did the trial of that curriculum at Horizonte with different students there. Then, after that, I started working at the Bountiful Community Food Pantry. And I worked there for about six or seven years as their client service manager, which, again, using the Spanish that I learned as a missionary, which was really helpful, but got to know really well the people of Davis County. And we partnered with the school district on a lot of projects. One particularly is the Pantry Pack Program, which was a program where we provided shelf-stable bags of food for students to take home on the weekends that would otherwise be food insecure. Did that, and then a lot of volunteer coordination. I think one of the biggest benefits of having a food pantry in a community like Bountiful is letting people be involved in the volunteer efforts that are required for a food pantry of that sort and helping them be aware of the needs of the community that might otherwise be invisible to them.
That is a long list of good you've done. I'm very impressed from working on your mission and literacy and food pantry and all of those things. And I'm sure along the way, you've developed a lot of incredible skills. Tell me about the things you feel like you learned, especially like volunteer management, because that's something that is hard to do, especially on a large scale. And you did that for Becky Edwards' campaign as well. And she had so many volunteers. And you've done it in the nonprofit world. What skills do you need to do that? Do you have any tips? How do you manage volunteers?
Yeah, that is a great question. So, in the last few years that I was working at the Bountiful Food Pantry, I came to realize that a lot of the issues that the clients were facing were due to policies that needed to be addressed on a higher level. And so, I started paying more attention to the legislature and got to know my representatives fairly well, especially Becky Edwards. She was my legislator. And I'm also a Girl Scout leader. And our Girl Scout troop worked with Becky on a bill that was going through the session. There are two statues that represent every state in the United States Capitol. And Utah's statues have previously been Brigham Young and Philo Farnsworth, who invented the TV. Most of us already have effigies to Philo T. Farnsworth in our home, like multiple televisions.
Good point, good point.
So, our Girl Scout troop and Becky and the Better Days Organization wanted to change that second statue representing Utah to Martha Hughes Cannon, who was the first woman to ever serve in the legislature. What I was so impressed with in this process was, at this time, these girls were nine- and 10-year-old Girl Scouts. And they went to the legislature and learned about the bill and then did research about Martha. And then, they lobbied. They wrote letters. Those that couldn't read and write very well yet were drawing pictures. They talked to their friends and neighbors. Then, they went and talked to legislators. And I loved the idea that anyone, like even a 12-year-old Girl Scout, not at that point, sorry, 9-, 10-year-old Girl Scout, could effect policy change in the legislature. And then, seeing these policy issues that I was concerned about. And that, and I guess I should say that bill passed and Martha will be going to Washington. There's been lots of delays due to COVID and Speaker of the House issues and whatnot that slowed that down. But we're hoping this summer sometime Martha will go. And my daughter, who is now 15, is just absolutely thrilled. And she feels like, "I did this. This is the bill that I passed, and I'm going to see it take effect in Washington DC," which I think is phenomenal. So, seeing even these young kids feel empowered to make a difference and affect policy change really affected me. And so, I do have a lot of experience with volunteers. And some people know a lot about sports. Some people know a lot about cars. Like, I like to collect people. Like, I just, I love hearing people's stories. And I can sit down and talk to even someone that I may not have anything in common with. And I just am so fascinated by their stories and by their experiences. So, I think that helps with volunteer coordination in really seeing people as individuals and trying to find their particular skills and remembering people and remembering things about their lives and remembering things that they talk to about. That's really important. And really talking with them about what they want to do. And if someone does have a really specialized skill, are we using that skill? Or are we having them do something that isn't necessarily in their skill set? So, seeing this ability to affect policy change and then wanting to be part of it. When Becky Edwards announced her campaign for the United States Senate, I reached out to her and I said, "Hey, I would love to help you on your campaign." And, which was a little brazen of me because I'd never been hired by a politician to do any sort of campaigning whatsoever. Like, I'd followed numerous bills, not just the statute bill, but numerous bills that were important to me throughout the sessions. And I said, "I am good at coordinating volunteers." And what I loved about Becky was her ability, on a one-on-one scale, to engage people in the process. And I said, "I want to take what you do here and do it on a massive scale. We want to pull people in and have them feel like they are part of the organization and they're connected to it and that they have ownership in this campaign, that this campaign is about us, not just the one candidate." The campaign leaders initially said, "Okay, Alisa, we'll bring you on as a volunteer for 30 days and then, we'll decide whether or not we want you, to hire you to come on this campaign." And thankfully, I have the privilege of being able to work doing the things that I care about. And I have a little bit of flexibility in that. So, I took a month of not working and volunteered on the campaign and did my best to make myself absolutely essential. And this is a process too, because it's hard to transition from volunteering to employment. But I said, "Okay, we've done 30 days. These are the value adds that I've brought to this organization, and I think you should hire me." So, they hired me. And I was working underneath the Field Operations Director. But within a month, the Field Operations Director took another job. And so, they said, "Guess what? You're getting promoted." And the big thing that happened, and the big thing that I think was the huge success and was unprecedented in Becky's campaign, was that in Utah, we have a really high signature threshold to get on the ballot. My understanding is that it's significantly higher than any other state. So, to get on the Senate primary Republican ballot, you had to collect 28,000 signatures from registered Republican voters. And due to error for various reasons, party affiliation, someone not writing clearly, whatever, we had to double that number. And the idea with that is that it increases ballot access. But unfortunately, because of the really high threshold, the history of that has been that the majority of candidates pay for that service. And Becky had also hired a firm to do that. And there was 90 days to accomplish this really large goal. 30 days into the process, the company came to her and said, "I'm sorry, we are not going to be able to accomplish the goal that we said that we would, the contract that we've made." And this was terrifying because they, all this effort had been put into getting her on the ballot and having her run this campaign. And so, she came to me and she said, "Alisa, can we do this with volunteers?" And I said, "I don't think it's ever been done before." We still had the firm working, but they weren't going to get even a third of the way to the goal that they'd hoped to accomplish, which is, yeah, just crazy. And I said, "I don't know that it's ever been done before, but we've never had a candidate like you, and I know how to engage volunteers." So, we set up a lot of systems. We changed the way that signature gathering was done. Previously, it was always kept quiet how many signatures you had to surprise the other candidates or whatnot. And I said, "We've got to be absolutely transparent. If we expect people to donate their time to signature gather, they need to feel completely connected to the process." And we had thankfully, a great comms team that on social media talked about signature gathering. We just felt like we needed everyone to be involved, and it worked amazingly well. Somehow, we were, of all the campaigns, and one of the campaigns spent half a million dollars on signature gathering, and we were using primarily volunteers. And we were the first campaign to submit. You have to have the 28,000 to be able to submit the first time, and then, you submit subsequent to fill in the holes. It was International Women's Day, and we realized, "We're going to have the signatures, and Becky's going to be the first woman to appear on a primary ballot in Utah for the Republican Senate." And so, we all checked our daughters out of school. We put on Becky t-shirts, and we all went to the Utah Capitol together to submit those signatures. And I was crying because it was so much work. It was so much work, really hard. But it felt like such a collective effort. And when, even when they talk about it, they'll say, "I did this." And that, to me, is so exciting that they feel so empowered, that they have ownership over that process. And now, they're skilled in this skill that is really specialized skill. And there are lots of those people that were involved in that campaign that are now supporting other candidates on local levels or running themselves, which I am absolutely loving seeing.
I love that there's so much in that that I want to talk about more. But the last thing you said about how all these volunteers are now either running themselves or volunteering on other campaigns. One of the best ways to get involved is to just jump in and volunteer. And I love how you went to the Becky campaign and just said, "Use me. I'm good at this. Use me." And I've worked in politics a long time. You almost always, when you're running a campaign, want somebody to volunteer first because you don't have enough time to train someone, have it not work out, and then fire them or find somebody else. You're really tight on time. And so, if they'll volunteer for a period of time, and I've seen this over and over again, they can get hired. And, I mean, you do have to do what you did, which was transition because obviously, the campaign would rather not pay you because they can save the money, even if they're getting your work for free. But so, you do have to advocate and say, "I've done this and this. I'm of value. I can't keep volunteering. I want to be on staff." And I've seen that work countless times. And honestly, when people want to work in politics, that's what I tell them to do. You volunteer first and build some credibility. So, that's amazing. But I want to go back to one of the first things you were talking about, which is the Girl Scouts. I knew the Martha Hughes Cannon story about the statue, but I'd never heard that there was a Girl Scout troop involved. So, that was your troop. That's so amazing. How did you inspire those girls? Like, I have kids about that age, and I just see them being like, "What? You want me to do what?"
It was the perfect bill because it wasn't too political and it was female representation. And honestly, Becky was a huge help because our girls having a female representative in the state legislature, and she took them on this whole tour of the Capitol. I think their favorite part was the House soda machine that's like back only for the House members. But they were super excited about that. They were like, "You mean I can get any soda I want anytime if I'm a legislator? Sign me up." But I think too, and the story of Martha, like Martha is such an inspiring leader. They were super excited about the idea that she ran against her husband to get that office. Slightly lesser known is that she also ran against her best friend, who was Emmeline B. Wells. Angus Cannon, Emmeline B. Wells, and Martha Hughes Cannon were all in the same race together trying to get this seat in the Utah Senate. And that she was a physician and that she spoke her mind. And I think Girl Scouts does a great job of encouraging that kind of leadership. Like, you have to, I've teased that these candidates that need signature gatherers. I just, the other day, I told some of them, I was like, "You should call the Girl Scout Organization and find the girls that are 18 that have just graduated. They know how to sell cookies. They know how to collect signatures."
Same skill set.
Exactly. It's talking to strangers. And I've even told, even just this week, I was using the metaphor too. When people are collecting signatures, I said, "You're not selling pest control. You're selling Girl Scout cookies." Like, people want to participate in democracy. Like, you can go to their doors, and yes, it might be bothering them slightly, but it's something they want. Let them participate in it. That ability to canvas, signature gather, any of those kind of, and run for office, all of it is putting yourself out there and talking to strangers. But I do think, when I look back on it, like I was a Girl Scout. My mom was a Girl Scout. My grandma was a Girl Scout. I was a really shy kid to the extent that when I was really young, people used to ask my parents if they worried about me because I didn't talk. And I think that Girl Scouts Theater, Mission, like all those things helped me come out of my shell. And I think maybe the biggest thing was just loving other people and feeling like, it can be scary sometimes, but most of us, if we just talk to each other person to person, there's going to be kindness and humanity there at the very least.
So, it sounds like we need to recruit former Girl Scouts to run for office. That needs to be one of our projects. I love it.
I don't know what the statistic is, but there is a statistic that the majority of elected officials, female CEOs, I'll find the statistic, but have been Girl Scouts. Like, it's, there's a connection there. Yeah.
That's so cool. That's fantastic. Let's see. We haven't even talked about your current run for office right now. So, tell me a little bit about the office you're running for, Davis County School Board, right? And how that's going?
I have three kids in school. I've got two 15-year-olds that are sophomores, Max and Maya. And then, I have a 12-year-old who just started junior high. His name is Trent. I was a classroom volunteer. I was on the PTA. And I think a lot of moms can relate to that. And in Utah, I signed up several years ago. Someone asked me to join the community council at our school. And the way that works in Davis District is you help make some policies, but the biggest thing is working on the school land trust funds. So, Utah has a lot of land that generates money for education. And each public school gets a portion of those funds. And the community council gets to vote to decide, within certain limits, where those funds go. I actually was in a meeting for the junior high community council this morning at 7:00 AM. It started, thankfully, it was online, and I didn't have to drive in the snow this morning. So, I've participated in those community councils for probably the last eight or nine years and got to know just some of the backgrounds of the policies, some of the budgeting discussions, at least on land trust funds. And then, also participating with Becky Edwards' campaign and getting to know a lot of elected officials. And then, also working at the food pantry. That also helped me connect with a lot of civic leaders in my area. So, when my school board member decided to not run for reelection, her oldest child is going to be aging out of school soon, and she's decided to actually run for county commissioner. Her name is Liz Mumford. She asked me to run for her seat. And at first, I was nervous about it. And I actually made her come over and I said, "I can't run for this reason. I haven't gone to every single school board meeting, and I don't have advanced degrees, and I'm not as eloquent as she is." She's done such a phenomenal job through, the last few years have been especially difficult for school boards. And she's just handled it so calmly, peacefully, and intelligently. I'm just so impressed. And I said, "I get emotionally riled up about things." I had a whole long list of reasons why I couldn't do it. And she sat with me and said, "You don't have to know all of the policies and all of the answers. There are people on staff that know those things, and you can learn them. It's okay that you don't know every school board policy and why every decision has been made. And it is, your experience is important, and your life experience is important, and your dedication to the community is important." So, she, one by one, walked through it. And so, I sat with it and tested out the idea for a week or so, you know, talked to a few people. And I got a lot of support back, which was exciting. And a lot of people were excited about the idea of having someone that knows the community, cares about the community, wants to make the school district a welcoming place for all students and a place where teachers can thrive. Early January was the filing period for Utah to file for office. And even before the filing period, I had someone encourage me to set up a fundraising site, which was probably a good thing because at that point, then, I had to file because I'd already raised money. So, I couldn't get cold feet and back out at that point. The filing period closed a week ago, Monday, and I found out I have two other candidates that filed for this office, so I'll have a primary in June. There was about a week where it looked like I wasn't going to have another candidate running against me. And I thought, "Oh, I hate when the ballots don't have like someone to vote for." Although, I was like, "Oh, this'll be a lot easier." But I was glad to have, so I'm a little intimidated by having a primary, just the effort that needs to be made in a primary and then a general election in November. But I feel like the biggest benefit of having the campaign is that I'm talking to so many people and listening. And I've learned so much even about just services that are available within the school district, especially with my kids, just their first year in high school. There's the Davis Training Center, the DTC, which has all sorts of training. And you could even get like the first half of your pilot's license while you're in high school, which is amazing. And learning about the online options for, I have a friend that teaches and is a parent in the Davis, Davis has their own online school that started during COVID and has continued. I think, actually, part of it was happening before then, but they expanded it during COVID. So, I feel like I'm learning a lot and learning how to have conversations about myself rather than about another person. That's the big change.
It sounds fantastic. As much as everyone would like to run unopposed, you've got a good attitude about your race. So, that's good. And I like how people, you were asked to run because you've been involved for so long in various aspects of your community. And I think that's such a, that happens very often to women, right? They're all over the place. They serve everywhere. And then, when it comes to running for office, kudos to you for saying, "Okay, I'll do it because I know it's intimidating." So, I wish you luck. Did want to ask you a little bit about, you talked about your mission and how that kind of led you into the nonprofit world. But have you felt, as you're running for office or helping Becky or whatever other political things you've done, how's your faith influenced that? Have you felt like confirmation that you're supposed to be doing this, or is it, "I'm going forward"?
On blind faith.
On blind faith.
That's a good question. And it's been interesting kind of switching from nonprofit to politics. Although, my race is nonpartisan, it's still an election. 100% my desire to be involved and serve others is because of my faith. I don't think that there is anything that I can do as an individual that will ever heal the mistakes that I've made, the wrongs that I've suffered. I think that all of the difficulties of life, whether self-imposed or put upon me, there's nothing I can do to fix those things. But I believe in the power of atonement and the ability that the atonement has to heal and perfect us in a way that makes us closer to God. And I feel like when I believe in that healing and when I believe in that ability of God's power of love to make me whole, it makes me want to act in a way that I am performing the love that I am receiving from God. And I hope my motivations are always, and I try for my motivations to be, to love others the way that I receive love from God. And that forgiveness and that wholeness and that filling in the gaps that I have of, as a human, as a mother, as a friend. When I feel true love from my husband or when I feel true love from my children or from my dear friends, it is that 100% acceptance of who I am, even with all of the messiness that I come with. And so, when I really feel that in my heart, I am motivated to then show that to others and to try and spread God's love to the communities that I live in. There's a lot of suffering in the world, and there's a lot of pain. But if I feel like my small parts of stepping up, my small parts of trying to make the world a better place, whether that's by loving my neighbor or forming policies that will help support them to become their whole selves, either one of those, I am enacting that love of God to others around me.
That's really beautiful. Thank you for sharing. I just, I can't help thinking, how much better this world would be if everyone who was running for office felt like that and just wanted to love others and spread the love. It's, that was very beautiful. I have loved talking to you. This has been so much fun. You have such good stories. And I really appreciate you coming on, Alisa, and telling us a little bit about your background. I feel like we could talk for a really long time, but unfortunately, we're almost out of time. So, my last question I wanted to ask is if you had an invitation for our listeners today?
Monday was Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And so, I went to an event at the Capitol with my kids and was, have been thinking a lot about this service and willingness to be vulnerable. And obviously, Martin Luther King experienced that to such a more profound degree. But I love his quote that everyone can be great because But I love his quote, that everyone can be great because everyone can serve. My invitation is that we as women, look around our communities and, or look around our homes and look around our neighborhoods and find opportunities to serve. And what I have found in my life is that the more that I do that and the more that my eyes are open to it, the more that I see opportunities to serve. And I hope that I can teach my children that, but I hope that as a community, if we can just open our eyes and our hearts to opportunities to serve, and whether that be on your school PTA, on your community council, if you're volunteering at a food bank, or run for office and make the policies better for all your community members and see them, just really see the people around you.
That's such a great invitation. Thank you so much. And thank you for joining us today and for being such an inspiration and all the good you're doing in the world.
Thank you so much. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you all for listening to Project Elected Podcast. For free resources and materials, head over to projectelectwomen.org. We're also on Instagram and Facebook as Project Elect Women. We'd love for you to subscribe, rate us, or give us a review on iTunes. So until next time, thank you.